Postmaster. And that, that has been true since then. In Carmel by the Sea, we do not have home delivery of mail. The United States mail goes to our post office and the United States Postal Service employees put the mail into our P O boxes and that's where we go to get it. And that has always been true and we believe that always will be true. Interestingly, there are thousands of communities across the country, millions of people, who have that exact same system. And I share that because I think sometimes we think in Carmel that that's a uniqueness to Carmel. The fact that we don't have home delivery and that we always go to the post office and we get our mail at the post office. And if we choose to make the post office a social place, it can be. We're not unique at all in that regard. I lived in rural Colorado for almost 20 years. That's exactly the system that we had in rural Colorado. And it wasn't just my community, it was, you know, any community under 10,000 people. That's the system. The other thing that the post office, the postal service does is they own and maintain the address management system, A M S. A M S is sort of the center of gravity for building identification numbers in our country. It is the one, it's the only one, safe source for verification and validation of street addresses, of house numbers, of building identification numbers, whatever name you want to put on this. And what I've come to understand is that what does make Carmel by the Sea unique is the fact that our house numbering scheme, system that's currently in place is not compatible with A M S. And we're going to talk more about this in a minute. But again, our current system is not compatible with the address management system that is maintained by the post office. And that basically allows all of the entities out there that want to validate and verify our address, they all go to A M S. So it's, it's the one place that everybody goes, Google Maps goes there, Apple Maps goes there, et cetera. And I mentioned that there are millions of other people and thousands of other communities that have the same mail delivery system that we have. All of those communities where I lived in rural Colorado, we all had A M S compatible addresses. That's the difference. So that's really an important, central theme in our conversation today is remember we're all, you know, A M S is always kind of part of the conversation. With that, I'm going to let Emily come up. And we'll go.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Protem Delves did a great job of covering USPS and what staff has emphasized since November of 2023, which is that mail delivery and at-home mail delivery and an address system are two different things. Implementation of an address system and at-home mail delivery are not the same thing again as Mayor Protem Delves explained. They're two different, important but different functions of USPS. And just to go back a little bit. So throughout the years and especially with this collaboration between staff and residents and Mayor Protem Delves, it was confirmation and additional research that if addresses were to be implemented in the city of Carmel by the Sea, what is considered centralized delivery, which Mayor Protem Delves explained, is when you receive mail at your, at your post, post office box without at-mail home delivery. Another place nearby that does that is Spraggles, small community. They go to the post office every day or every other day to pick up their mail. They do have street addresses, standard street addresses. And the reason that USPS and the A M S system, which stands for Address Management System, keeps coming up in these conversations is again, because USPS is the authority for verification, for physical location verification. You know, you call your bank up and they're, they're looking on their end. You tell them their address, you know, when they type in and you say Santa Fe 3 and they say that's not registering, that's, that's the database that they pull from. And that, that is why a lot of folks know when you go get your, renew your post, your P O box, you have to go in person. Again, it's part of their process of verification of that person, physical verification and identity identification. And again, it's additional confirmation has, has been through USPS, through the Address Management Systems Manager of District Three of California, has assured us that implementation of a street address system itself is not what would compel at-home mail delivery in the city of Carmel by the Sea. Again, as staff has repeated, can we, can we guarantee that the post office will never close? Of course not. It's a federal entity. It's a federal agency and independent federal agency at that. But it won't be because of an address system being implemented in the city of Carmel by the Sea. And this would not result in mailboxes about town. It, you know, it wouldn't result in a mailbox at the end of your driveway or cluster boxes. There are some folks know them as gang boxes. And again, the city, the city of Carmel by the Sea already employs a centralized delivery system, which is efficient and streamlined for USPS. We've spoken with the postmaster. He's assured, you know, that again, it's the preferred method. So we've got it set up here. On their end, it would be, and he, he explained that in some detail, it would be more expensive for them to ever try to implement at-home mail delivery or anything like that. He simply said, it just doesn't have the capacity to do that. And again, a, a big part of staff's research was to really get to the immediate, an answer of the post office that was always what we called the hard line during the research since we began this. What's going to happen to the post office? Again, that was a critical element that staff identified in 2022. And that's, that's what we've been working towards and we got an official answer. And again, there wouldn't be a change to the current system at 93921. So now we get to what we've been talking about, which is A M S and USPS address requirements. And this is, this is what we've talked about. They're called USPS addressing conventions. And we got these guidelines directly from USPS. And I'll just briefly go over them. So some of the main points for an address to be compatible with, with the A M S system, Address Management System, was that it must begin with a whole primary numeral, up to five numbers, that's the limit. And it must include only one street name. So, you know, there goes Monterey and Ocean. Even numbers on one side, odd numbers on the opposing side of the street or avenue consistently, a supplemental unit suite apartment at the primary street address with an identifying suffix, that must be an America or Alpha character. So I think, you know, apartment one, suite B, something like that. And a simple example of an accepted USPS address system, address would be something like 656 Ocean Avenue, Carmel by the Sea, California, 93921. And if you look over here to this yellow-orange box, these are addresses that we actually ran through USPS Address Management Systems Manager. She ran these exact addresses. So the question was, you know, if I look at two San Antonio Southeast 13th, I asked her, does any variation of this work? And I sent her about three or four different variations of that, of I, that I know have been workarounds or different addresses. You know, two San Antonio Southeast 13th might be the way you describe it to, to a friend. But I also know, you know, P G and E bills, sometimes they put a dash instead or their, their formatting is different. So I tried every formatting that I could think of. And she responded with reasons why, she said, rejected, rejected, rejected. And I, again, there were variations that we attempted of the current existing addressing system that the city uses. Now we get to the address legal requirements. So as Mayor Protem Delves explained, California Fire Code, Residential Code and Building Code requires identifying street numbers visible from the street. So again, think of an addressing system. And the, in order for it to meet compliance, it says the address should be, identification should be legible with contrasting background and place in a location visible from the street or road fronting the property. Numbers shall not be spelled out. Each character must be four inches high with a minimum stroke width of half an inch. And as required by Fire Code Official, address must be provided in approved locations for emergency response. So where access is by a private road or driveway and the building cannot be viewed from the public way, monument pole or other signs should, shall be used to identify the structure. So we all know the city of Carmel by the Sea has sort of those properties that may be bunched in the back and it has a long driveway in. Again, there should be an identification sort of at the beginning of that so that emergency personnel, emergency responders know what units or what homes or would be down that road. And address identification shall be maintained. So again, these are the requirements in order for the city to be in compliance. Currently, the city does, does not meet the standard. And that's, that's where we're, we're trying to work out here with our collaboration of finding something that fits these requirements, that meets compliance, that works for the city of Carmel by the Sea, something that our first responders and emergency personnel agree with and is helpful for them during situations. And we met with them, we asked them, what do you look for? What do you need? What, what would be your ideal addressing system? You know, what helps you find a building or, or, you know, get to a person faster? And of course, with all their years of experience, they all had their own anecdotes. And we definitely took notes of that and I worked that in when we were looking for, for different options and essentially a prototype.
So I'm going to just reiterate one thing that Emily said is, we, one of the first things we tried to do is figure out, is there a way to make our existing system compatible with A M S? So I, I'm, my address is Camino Real 3 S E 4, so three southeast to fourth. So we tried that as an example. But then I know we, we all have tricks that we've used over the years to try and trick whatever the system is. So I, you know, I tried like putting the three first, okay? Three Camino, four S E. That didn't work. I tried putting zero first because sometimes that trick works. So there was no variant of, of that traditional system that could pass muster. Because if there was, that would have been a very easy path forward, right? So just wanted to share that. All right, we're going to get into the safety dispatch and response times. First thing I want to talk about is some really, I think, important and good news related to our first responders and our emergency response. So many of you may be aware, but we were, we, we learned that many are not aware that the Monterey Fire Department provides our fire service. So we have a Carmel Fire Station and we have Carmel Fire Trucks and we have a Carmel Ambulance. So on the fire side, all of the employees that are in that building driving those trucks are actually employees of the Monterey Fire Department. This has been true for over a decade and they, it, it's proven to be an excellent contract. It works because Monterey provides service to their own city of Monterey, to Pacific Grove, to us, to, I think, Delray Oaks and to the airport. That gives them economies of scale. That means they have, I think, 80 different, 80 employees. And it's just a lot easier for them to maintain a force than it would be for us to just try and do that. And that was an excellent decision made by previous city councils a long time ago. That, the, the Fire Department, Monterey Fire Department has just committed to us that going forward and soon, there will be a paramedic firefighter on every truck. So, you know, you don't have to just, you don't have to wait for the ambulance to arrive to have a paramedic on site. And that's important because there are plenty of times when the fire truck gets there first. Second thing is we are about to enter into a contract with Monterey Fire Department to actually take over our ambulance. We all learned that we are the, actually the only municipality in the county that continues to own and operate our own ambulance. All other ambulances in the county are provided by A M R. A M R is a private sector ambulance operator that is under contract with the county. And they are not stationed in any fixed location. They're just kind of always roaming around the county, kind of playing off each other depending on where they are. Whereas often, not always, often the, our ambulance is less than a mile away from most of us. So that's just some good news to share. The response times, our response times are excellent. They're exceptional. But what we learned from our conversation with the fire chief and the police chief is that they can be better. Response times come, it really comes down to a couple of things. The first one is dispatch and that's everything that happens before the fire truck leaves the building or the ambulance leaves the building. And then it's familiarity and proximity, which is more about what happens after the, the crew arrives or thinks they arrive where they're supposed to go. So let's start with dispatch. We are unique in Monterey County in that our police department operates our own dispatch function. So everywhere else in the county, if you call 911, it, your phone call is answered by someone in Salinas that works for the county. In Monterey, sorry, in Carmel by the Sea, if you dial nine, when you dial 911, you go to the dispatch function at the Carmel Police Department, so that building there. The reason we, we staff a dispatch function is because of the uniqueness of our address system. That that's, it's, it's, that's a foreign language to central dispatch at the county, but it's a language that our dispatchers are trained in. So you call 911, your, your phone call is going to get answered by someone at our police department. They have the knowledge and the skill. And depending on how new they are, you know, that, that is the degree to which they have the excellence of the skill. But they, they know what to ask. They understand what Camino Real 3 Southeast to Fourth means. And they know how to get the right information out of you in addition to a lot of the information that's provided electronically and technically, which is quite a bit. You know, it's a modern system. They get you, you know, GPS coordinates. It's, it's pretty sophisticated. But then they have to call central dispatch in Salinas. So we call them, they answer the phone, they've, they do this triage and translation function. They call the county and do that. And the county makes the phone call actually to the fire department or to the ambulance to actually dispatch us. And what we learned is best case, that takes 10, 20, 30 seconds. Worst case, it can add three minutes. And that's actually not reported in the response times that are reported to us, you know, by, by Monterey Fire. Their, their response time as measured, the way they measure it, it starts when they're in the truck and heading out the garage door. That's when it starts. So all of the dispatch time is not included in that. And then the second half of this is proximity and familiarity. Best case is when that phone call comes in, it goes to the county, the county calls and our assets, our fire department, our fire truck, our fire crew or our ambulance and our ambulance crew are home. They're in the building. Because when that's the case, they're less than a mile from you. Also, those people, they, they sign two-year contracts to actually work out of the Carmel Fire Department, out of the building. So in the course of those two years, they're pretty smart, they're pretty well-trained in our system. They deal with it on a daily basis. They know how to find us. So that's the best case and that's great. But that's not always true. That if there is need, if there's a fire in the Highlands or especially anywhere south of here, or even a big fire in the valley or a big fire in Monterey, a lot of times that means our assets are not at home. Okay? So in that case, they make the phone call to the next closest truck. So instead of being less than a mile away, now somebody might be coming from Monterey or somewhere else. So that's, and, you know, the other factor involved is the firefighters coming from perhaps Monterey or Pacific Grove. Again, they've signed two-year contracts to be in those buildings. They may not have the same level of familiarity with our system. So they may struggle a little bit more to find us. And what we learned is that what happens when they're measuring the response time is as soon as they think they're at our location, when they think they're in front of my house, that's when they press, we're here. And that stops the recording of response time. But the reality is they don't really know if they're there yet. Because they still have to do the kind of, the dance of getting out and counting houses from zero or one to another one. If it's dark, you know how dark it is in Carmel, that there can be quite a bit of time on the other end, on the arrival side of this, that really isn't accounted for in the excellent response times that are reported to us. How much? I, I, we don't know. We can't, can't even speculate, but just that it's a real thing. And then the same is true for the ambulance. If our ambulance isn't home, then that call is getting answered by A M R, the private sector company that, you know, may receive some training in our address system, but they cover the whole county and we're one square mile in a, you know, in a county bigger than Delaware. So that's what we learned.
So if I could add one little P S to that, Bob? The, you didn't cover when, when our 911 didn't pick up the call yet, so I'd let you do that. But I wanted to call out that when our ambulance, fire ambulance and fire truck is away serving a request, there is commonly, they, the Monterey teams will shift a resource here locally so that there is still coverage. So that is a common practice. They do that wherever they can because of the multiple places where they have facilities and resources.
And it, it gets better because that, you know, Monterey Fire does that within their own things, but they coordinate with Marina and Seaside as well. So, you know, it's, it's sort of a fluid system. But it works best when, when it's coming from our, from our building. All right, we're going to get to the Kevin show. I'm here to do the prototype. I, I won't say it again, the details, but this is a prototype. It's not necessarily a decision that anyone has made on what an address system might look like. Once we understood that we couldn't find a way to make our current system A M S compatible, we thought we needed to at least give ourselves some guidelines before we started kind of boiling the ocean of compatible addresses. So these are just things we decided. Again, city council may make different assumptions when it, if and when they actually decide to do something, but these are the assumptions we made. Whatever we do should not trigger changing, changing street names or introducing more street signage. Whatever we do has to satisfy the United States Postal Service Address Management System requirements. It should be preferred by our first responders. It should use the city layout as a plus. You know, Kevin will explore that with you, but we're blessed with street numbers, with numbered streets, first through 13th. That gives you a logical pattern that can be helpful. It should be logical and intuitive and it should protect, protect tradition where possible. You know, we understand there's passion for tradition. I didn't, the one other thing I didn't say on the first responders was that the fire chief and the police chief were quite clear that they would much prefer us to have A M S compatible addresses. And they've, that put them on record in a conversation that we had. But that was also, that also came out in a previous conversation. I think it was at a February city council meeting when we asked those questions. Kevin, you ready?
Thank you, Bob. As Bob said, we, we found a need to create a prototype because it was necessary to engage with other parties when we talked to them. We had something somewhat tangible to, to have a concrete conversation. We came up with four basic models. One we call a quadrants. There's one called continuous within the city. There's continuous with the county. And then one we call the logical positional. You can tell by the way we've highlighted it here, that's actually the one we ran with. But I do want to talk about the other ones so that we understand what the pros and cons of those were. I'm going to grab that mic. Can you hear me? That's good? Okay. So if we look at quadrants, this was driven from the simple observation that the city's logically divided into four parts along Ocean Avenue and Hunipah Avenue. Can you not see this well? Can you? You want us to move it out a little bit? You're fine. Okay. It's going to be hard to move because it's trapped behind here, but we can pull it out a little bit. Is that better for everybody? One of the things this does is require, I used to live in a quadrant city, Washington, D C. So this requires we'd have a northwest, northeast and so on. You have compass orientations to the part of the city you live in, the quadrant. That's fine, it's all very logical, but how many of you have been asked by a tourist, which way is the beach? Okay, many people do not know which way is west, northeast or south. This is also counterintuitive to the numbered avenues. So we have numbers, one, you know, first, second, third, fourth avenue all the way down. And if you start with zero here and work your way up as well as down, you have numbers getting bigger as the numbered avenues get smaller. Here, the numbers would at least get bigger as the numbers get bigger, but they're not going to coincide with these numbers of seventh, eighth, ninth and so on. So that's another disadvantage of that. Also, numbers can be duplicated. You can have a 150 East Ocean and a 150 West Ocean. One of the things that happened to me in D C more than once is you go to the wrong quadrant. You know, you end up at 300 M Southeast instead of Northwest. So anyway, that, that's, that's another downside to this plan. And another one, and this is perhaps the biggest one, is that we have to change all the street names. You know, if you live up here on Torres, you don't live on Torres anymore. You live on North Torres. If you're over here, now you live on, you know, West Seventh Avenue. So we have to repaint or replace all of the street signs in the city. And we had decided early on that we were going to avoid recommending anything that caused that, caused that to happen. So let's talk about the second option, which is continuous within the city here. And this is also very intuitive. And I want to point, remind you, all of these four options are A M S compliant. The post office would be okay with any of these. You basically start at the top with one and work your way down. You, you can't just go two, four, six, eight. You have to skip numbers because the post office requires at least one empty unused number between numbers. This for the same reason is counterintuitive to these because you get down here, you're, you're using roughly 40 numbers per block on this axis. And it's good. One advantage to this system is everybody gets a number that's not more than three digits. Because you only get down to about 600 down here, I think. And across this axis, you only get to about 200. So great, everybody gets short numbers. One problem is that you need to number in the densest part of town, you can have six lots across in this stretch of ocean here or the business district in general. Numbers should roughly align all the way across the city. So you're going to have to pack these numbers in. Now, do you want to have different amounts of numbers between these blocks than you do between these blocks? Makes more sense than to be spaced out evenly all the way across. You also lose something that we have, which is a positional reference from the nearest intersection. One of the great things about the numbers we have is I can tell you, well, I live on a corner. Let's suppose you live at, you know, Dolores 2 Southeast, 2 Southeast of Seventh. Everybody who knows Carmel, they know where your house is just from that description. They don't have to guess where it is. And this system does not, does not accommodate that. So the continuous with the county, which is again, a very logical way to do this. If you've entered the city from the north up here, you'll see numbers that are 24,700, 24,800. And down here, they come out around, I want to say the high 26,000s, low 27,000s down in this neighborhood here. And we could do that. It is logical. You know, a fire truck driving along here would see the numbers keep getting bigger. Do you really want a five-digit number? That's one downside to that is it doesn't seem to distinguish Carmel enough from its, from its immediate neighbors. And you lose the visual reference that you've entered the city. So if you're entering the city now and you see addresses, if you're looking at addresses, you'll notice that they change. You know, wow, you're going You know, wow, you're going from five digits down to three digits. Okay, well, what happened? You're in a different place. So it preserves that. So let's talk about this last option, which we're calling logical and positional. And this honors the current tradition of knowing your position within a block. It's intuitive to the numbered avenues. It keeps numbers to four digits or less. And to do that, I'm going to go to the next slide, which is what I think of as the money slide, if you will. This differentiates our village from the surrounding communities. This approach was, has received a preliminary okay from the post office address management system folks and also from the county. We didn't put that in the slide. We ran this by the county. We also need their approval. And it retains cross-street proximity indicators. So let's look at this map. I think I'm gonna, yeah, okay. Well, I'll, I'll talk to it. Let me see, can you? Can you see the mouse? Okay, there? Not really. Okay. Well, I'll talk to it. So if we, one of the first questions you have to ask when you, when you design an address scheme or an address convention is where is the origin? Where is zero? Okay. And the logical place to put that here, you think, well, what, how would we decide that? One of them is a logical geographical feature. Well, here it's obviously the beach. Okay, so that's where the land begins. That's where the numbers will begin. So that edge of the city is zero. And the north, because the numbered avenues start here, the north will be zero on this axis. So if there were a zero zero address, it would be kind of out here somewhere in Pebble Beach. But, and again, a reminder, we're going to have odds and evens on both sides of the street. Conventionally, even numbers are on the west and on the north. Odds on the opposite side. We're running with that. It's obviously subject to discussion, but. So let's talk about, I'm going to talk about North-South first. If you live just south of First, your number will start with a one. If you're south of Second, your number will start with a two. Once you get south of, south of 10th, it's going to start with a 10. You have four-digit numbers, 10, 12, 13. North of First, we have two blocks here. Fortunately, there are enough numbers that we can actually number this from one down to 99. And, and we have enough numbers. There are also, if you look at most of these blocks, typical Carmel block actually looks like this. 10 lots long and two, two lots across on the other axis. So let's talk a little bit about the west to east Iowa struggle here because I want to say east to west like everybody does. I think that comes from learning history when you're a kid because the country developed from the east to the west. So from west to east. If you, we, here we don't have numbers or letters like they do in DC. So we had, we just have named streets. So if you look at it, Hunipah really is the main drag. So we thought, well, let's put that kind of in a central position. And so we'll call that 500 because you need roughly that many numbers. And that gets you to almost 800 up in this corner. And it means that, I'm trying to remember which one is zero. Yeah, Carmel is basically 100. Zero is at the beach. And there are very few houses in these two blocks that are actually numbered on the street. Almost all the houses in town are numbered on North-South streets. They're not really numbered much on the, on the west to east streets. Okay, I think I've covered that pretty well. Let me go to the next slide as well. So we needed a set of rules to put together a prototype and talked about some of these using the numbered avenues, the west-east blocks are half the length of long blocks. So we decided they would be 50 numbers long. If your long blocks are 100 numbers, let's make the short blocks, which are half the size, 50 numbers. You have to leave a number for the post office, at least one. The good news is we have, in most cases, 10 numbers between them. And in a lot of the west-east streets, you could have more than 10 numbers between houses. It's actually only five numbers because you've only got one side of the street. For lots facing more than one street, these are corners and through lots. Roughly 20% of the lots in the city are corner lots. And so you had to reserve numbers for both sides. You know, I'm, I'm at the southwest corner of Santa Fe and First. There will be a number, number reserved for my house, both on First and on Santa Fe. Only one will be used, but the other number cannot be used by anybody else. It's reserved for that location. It retains the local custom for knowing how far you are from an intersection. So if your number is 350, well, you're south of Third and you're in the middle of the block. Another thing we had to commit to, and the post office also required this, we cannot change addresses that have a legacy, houses that have a legacy address where they have mail delivered. You may not know it. Depending where you live, there are a lot of the houses in this part of town, which was annexed when the mission was annexed in, I want to say early 70s, late 60s, 72. These have five-digit numbers if they're on this axis, four digits on this axis, and they have mailboxes and they receive mail. There are a few houses in this corner as well that have legacy addresses. So those are not going to change. So you, you'll even have some weird situations like here where houses on this side of the street will have five-digit addresses. On the other side, they'll have numbers that don't line up. There are going to be some weird exceptions like that, which sort of gets me to the next, I think I prefer this one, gets me to the next slide. Are there exceptions? There are lots of exceptions. The good news is that there aren't very many kinds of exceptions. You have diagonal streets. The obvious ones are Mountain View Avenue. Then you have Viscaino. Never know how to pronounce that. And Crespi. There's a little one up here in the corner, Valley Way. And these are, how do you number these? Do you just look at them? This one, for example, as you drive along, you're crossing short blocks. So it's numbered as a west to east street. These are, these are long blocks. So they're numbered the other way. You have blocks that are longer than 10 streets, 10 lots, say between Torres, between 10th and 11th. You have some long blocks down here. Numbers will have to be distributed differently here just to, so they fit. You have non-continuous streets. So Fifth and Sixth end at Monteverde. They don't continue beyond here. There are places like Fourth Avenue that cuts through here and then stops, you know, where the little pedestrian bridge is over the, over the ravine there. And then it picks up again. First also ends and picks up again. So does Ninth. And those we just, you skip numbers in the range that's not represented on the street. You have grouped parcels that can have more than one address per building. I'll talk more about that in a minute. You have parcels that may need more than one address because our basic unit is the APN. That's the assessment's parcel number. It's on that love letter you get from the county every fall. Tells you how much money you owe. So here's an example. Right here at Fourth and Hunipah. This big lot here is where we have the police department, Public Works and the Carmel Youth Center. So they need three different addresses. They're three different buildings with three different functions. You have cases where a building will only have one address and have sub-units. We also have lots that are bigger than your standard 4,000-foot lot. These occur in almost every single street block. There's one lot that's a double lot or it's a 6,000-foot lot or whatever. And there you're going to see numbers get skipped because the numbers should correspond to the position in the block, not to, not to the numbers around it necessarily. And parcels in the middle of the block would be close to the middle of the range for that block. Okay, let's look at an example of a residential prototype. And I want to emphasize that these numbers are approximate. If you see your house on here, this would not necessarily be your number, even under this particular model, prototype. It would probably be close, but it wouldn't necessarily be. So if we look down, look at my notes here. So again, odds on one side, evens on the other. Lot size affects the numbering. If you look here, you'll see 715, 735, 755. We're skipping numbers because the lots are wide. Here's an example of a big lot. This is the Playa Hotel at the bottom in orange. You know, so that's been tentatively numbered in the 830s because it's a huge lot. It takes, that, that would correspond more or less to the center of the lot on the street. The other thing you'll notice is that the third digit in these lots, the first digit corresponds to the avenue above. These are all in sevens because they're below Seventh Avenue. The second digit indicates the position within the block. Zero at the beginning, eight at the end. Well, that's a double lot. It could be a nine also. Then you have, on this side, side of the street, they're all fours. The other side, they all end with fives. Then it goes to sixes and sevens, eights and nines. And we had a conversation about this with the post office. They didn't want us to repeat numbers in every block. You'd have a situation where if you numbered the first house, you know, south of Ninth, 900 in every block, you could theoretically have several 900s in a row separate. They're only 100 feet apart from each other, which does not enhance findability. Let's talk briefly about ADUs. I'm going to let Nancy take this one.
As some of you know, I've been working on the Housing Element project with the city and ADUs are my subject area. So I thought I would, would cover this. ADUs are definitely a part of what state laws support throughout all of California. And they are definitely happening here in Carmel by the Sea. We all see them in various neighborhoods and some of them are wonderful, some of them people have complaints about. Nonetheless, there's at least 70 of them at a count of about a year ago. Maybe it was a little, little shorter period of time than that. But there are quite a few in the area. And this represents the recommendation of our work. It is not by any means final. So we will continue to work this over the, if, if we get the green light through the council process to continue to refine this and to explore whether or not this is the right recommendation that the city council wants to act on. But indeed, ADUs can be eligible for USPS addresses as per the postal staff. So if they want to have an individual address for that ADU, they have the rights to do so. Existing ADUs do not, are not, would not at this point, based upon the recommendation we're making, require an address. So that would be at the discretion of the property owner, which all, all of ADUs is at the discretion of the property owner. At day one, we are, are part of our objective with, with ADUs inside the Housing Element with this, you know, huge number of units that the city is obliged to plan for, is we look to have ADUs be rental and occupied. It is clearly always the discretion of the property owner, what they want to do with their ADU. But our objective is to get more people living and enjoying and participating in this wonderful city that we live in. And just as a point of reference, in 2015, our census says that we had 3,900 people living here. And census data can be fuzzy. I get it. In 2024, that number was down to 3,100. But we saw a peak in the middle of COVID. We all knew that a lot of people chose to work from home and, and maybe in the second homeowner scenario, they came here to live full-time in preference to where they had a property. Nonetheless, I, sorry, I digress there for a minute. But we're looking forward to having more vibrancy with more people living here full-time. That was kind of represented in the fact that we've had much higher numbers of people living here in the past within the same one-square-mile footprint. We did also want to have in the process, it's like, okay, if your ADU is, will benefit from having its own address, whether that's a number, as Kevin has been walking through the number model, that is, is potential for us going forward. That's one approach. Another is saying that it should have a unit number. So that has not been decided at this point. And we could go either way, given the number scheme that has been laid out and is also a requirement of USPS. So the, the recommendation is if that we don't issue ADUs addresses at day one, we have that be again, at the discretion of the property owner and they go to the planning desk to request an address at the time we are ready to go live, if we choose to go live. So that's kind of the context for, for that part of the mix.
Okay, let's talk about the, the commercial district. Okay, again, these numbers are approximate. If you see your business here, it does not mean it's going to be your address. One of the things about this is the business district basically is, you know, between Sixth and Seventh. That's the heavy part of the business district. Maybe it's Fifth, but Ocean is between Sixth and Seventh. And that means all the numbers there would begin with sixes, regardless of which side of ocean they're on. And that's the way this is represented here. The good news is this is a very small block between Sixth and Seventh, and there are actually very, very few addresses on the North-South streets. They're almost all on Ocean or on Sixth. So if you look at this, here's an example. We have, you know, 350, 360, 370, 380, 390. These don't have to end with zeros. That was just done here. Just to illustrate the example. And again, you'll see the same numbers here that where the third digit varies. The middle digit indicates the position of when the block and so on. So if you look at the city, take a building everybody knows, the library, we got on the wall back there. The library would be, basically be a 300 Ocean Avenue. It could also be as high as 324 Ocean Avenue. It will be an even number though. If you take City Hall, that's going to be between 650 and 670, but it'll be an odd number because it's on that side of the street. Okay, let's talk about apartments, multi-unit buildings. These are offices. There are lots in town, APNs that have several different stores in them and whatnot. As is standard practice with the postal service everywhere, a structure gets one standard street address. Units within a structure are numbered internally, A, B, C, 1, 2, 3. You can call them suites, units, apartments. There's actually a qualified list. And the same would happen with apartments and condos. There are some condos that are divided up into different APNs, but they would still just get one street address. Okay?
Okay, we've gotten there. So utilities, this actually was, a, a, a lot of our work was actually focused on utilities, but I can report it to you very quickly. It, just as background, in the late 90s and into about 2005, I was the chief executive of a software company that provided software to the utility industry, including billing software. So I actually have a little extra knowledge on the topic here. So while I was, we were asking the questions of the utilities, I kind of knew how to judge their answers pretty well. I think it's important to remember that billing addresses remain unchanged. So the utilities first and foremost want to make sure that they can get our money from us. And right now, our money goes to them either, well, our, the bill comes to us at our PO box. In my case, I'm on auto pay. It just goes by credit card and, or it'll go to your email address. That doesn't change. And so the utilities are happy in that regard that they know no matter what happens, they still get paid. Right? So this really comes down to they, they would like to change the service address. And the, the conversation we were trying to have with PG&E, CalAM, AT&amp;T and Comcast, those are the four we talked to, would, is would they be able to take on the work, the effort, the responsibility of updating our customer records with a new AMS compatible service address? That's the term they use or premise address, you know, sort of an You know, sort of as a batch function. And in all situations, the answer was yes, or at least they would try very hard. And I was relieved at that because what we what we found out is that it's actually very important to them. They don't like our current system. They just that they would prefer that we behave like the rest of their customers and had AMS standardized addresses. And I've used the example of PG&E. PG&E delivers, you know, flammable gas, natural gas to our homes. It bothers them that they don't know how to find us in a reliable manner. You know, call them, I smell gas. Where are you? Camino Real, three Southeast Fourth. It's a longer conversation. So they would actually, they'd be delighted to for us to have AMS compatible addresses and they'll do. They say they'll do the work required to do it. I was also encouraged because they all showed up with their A team. They didn't just show up with, you know, some customer service agent. They showed up with two, three or four individuals who knew what they were talking about. They knew their systems and they could give us an honest and straight answer. So that that helps me feel good about the ease and speed with which we might be able to move through implementation. The only other thing I'll mention is the county. Emily's going to talk about it in a second here. But we also had a great meeting with the county. The county is perhaps even more important than the United States Postal Service in this conversation. So yes, we have to come up with an ad, we would have to come up with an address scheme that checks the boxes for the post office. We've already kind of tested Kevin's prototype with them and they gave it a preliminary. Yeah, if you do this, we think it's it's a go. But the county is the one that actually has to update all of their records, which includes their their GIS system, our tax assessment system. We don't quite know about the voter rolls at this point, but they're kind of the center of gravity for making it happen. Same deal. They showed up with their A team. Everybody that has anything to do with an address at the county was in the conversation. And again, I think it gave us high confidence that they'll be a good partner moving forward and would not slow down any process. All right, Emily, we're almost done.
Okay, I'm going to give a slight brief overview of the process that we anticipate would be required should street addresses be implemented in the city. So this is a sort of a flow chart and we came up with this by meeting with engineers from the city of Marina, from the city of Salinas, how they implement addresses for new developments and especially in larger scale. And working with them and getting the the steps in the process that they take, we developed this, these steps that we think would be unique to the city, which are also different because they have to deal with the whole post office and mail delivery. Thankfully, we do not. And we made that very clear. So briefly, so step one would be research and review for safety and technical standards. So this is when, you know, we met with public safety, emergency personnel, you know, Chief Cooper, Chief Tomasi and and Acting Chief Frayer to get their point of view. You meet with planning, public works, again, what makes sense for them from their experience. And the USPS review, this is the, this is in step two. This is what Kevin referred to as, you know, that preliminary thumbs up, that preliminary, okay. So that's in two and that's that is the map that's directional that says, you know, from north to south, the numbers will go this way from, you know, east to west, they'll go, they'll go in increments of this or that. And that's when USPS says, okay, that makes sense. Again, they don't take a close look at it. They don't zoom in. They don't look at individual numbers. They just say, okay, that scheme makes sense. It's approved, approved or okayed by us. Again, it's a general numbering scheme. And then moving on from there would be step three. And that's that's really the meat of these five steps. That's where the most work happens. So this is the development of an address system again. So that would be something like the prototype that this group has developed. And that is going through and implementing this general scheme, this general system to 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 the city, to to your map. And that is the full development of what would that look like? Again, the full numbers for every parcel located in the city. And once all of that work would be done, that would be when you go to step four. And this is considered county approval. Again, the counties who would implement in their GIS systems, the locations of the new addresses. And again, and they only do that. It's important to note two and four are connected because at step four, the county needs to know that USPS gave that thumbs up in step two. They won't consider it unless they can confirm that you've gotten a thumbs up, preliminary thumbs up from step two. And so this is when the county reviews it. They take a look at the system. They they have a team that would look at it. And then that's where incorporation to their GIS system, emergency communication systems, elections office. And that's also where the county would say, you know, we found these mistakes in your data. These things don't make sense. Fix them. Or, you know, great, everything was perfect. And step five, that's really the the last of implementation, if you will. So that's where a mass distribution list is is what other cities call it, which is when that data, that spreadsheet goes out to AT&amp;T, USPS again, now that it has the approval of the county, PG&E, Comcast, CalM, COD, planning and building of our own department, the city, and, you know, homeowners and, you know, green waste. So step five is when everything has been approved. And again, that's where these contacts come come into play, the folks that we've met with from these different utility companies. You know, they they give us the contact, who who's going to do it, who's in charge of it? And the point is to have a direct line of contact and to build that list so that we can streamline the process as much as possible for folks in the city. And so that if we have questions, if we run into problems, again, that's why they're important is so that network is so important. So this is a general overview of what it would be like. It's a work in progress. Again, it's the the city of Carmel is unique. So this is a a working process. But the county, having taken a look at this, said, you've got it. You understand the process. You know, good job. So we got a little thumbs up from them during our meeting. Thank you.
All right. All right. So as Emily just walked through and mentioned previously, there's more than just utilities that we all do business with in various forms. And there are kind of in two different categories. One, where we believe there would be a lot that would be automated. And there are some where you need to take explicit action if we choose to implement it. So again, you know, we've all stated over and over again that billing addresses or contacts that you have with any of your personal relationships can remain the same if USPS is a part of the the lines of communication that you have with, I mean, for your mailings. So anything you receive via the mail, you don't need to touch it unless you know that you benefit from notifying them you have a a different address. Let's go through some some examples. So, you know, I recently have gone through putting, getting onto my mother's trust to help her as she ages. And it was very heavy lifting to get there. And so it it may, they may benefit from me proactively reaching out to them and saying, here is my new USPS address and or my banking relationship. Here is my physical address. Do not use that for mailing purposes, but here it might be. And in a lot of cases with insurance, they want to know exactly where your home is or where your car is. They want to know exactly where that is, and that can be a struggle. You can't do that online without, you know, reaching out for a personal connection of some sort to get an exception to deal with that. So in those cases, you may very well want to go ahead and proactively reach out to your insurance companies and say, hey, this is my physical address for my home. This is where my car lives, you know, that type of thing. So there's going to be a mix of scenarios here that you need to make your own good best judgments on where you need to change something. But many things can be fine as is because it works for you. So it's going to be, you know, dependent upon what type of engagement you have with what kind of entity. Folks have mistakenly represented in the past and when this topic has come up that you can't get a real ID or a DMV or a passport, TSA approval. All of those things, a whole lot of us and many of you probably in this room have all of that cared for using our P O box as our location. Sometimes you very often had to provide additional proof of your residency, a tax bill, a utility bill, those types of things to make those things successful. So when you go to renew your driver's license, your your real ID, you may benefit from providing them your new physical address. But to have to do that proactively at day one, if we go live with this, may not be necessary. And it's going to be up to your discretion as to whether or not you want to proactively take an initiative to, you know, go to DMV and tell them where where your, you know, car is with the license that you have with your vehicle as well as your driver's license or a real ID. So at renewal, that might be a really good idea for you to provide many of these entities proactive communication on your physical address, keeping your mailing contact status quo with the P O box or wherever you choose to receive your your postal mail and communications. So so this is going to be a mix of what's right for you on what would be appropriate and necessary, but may not need anything until a renewal event or that type of of service interaction with these entities might trigger a benefit from providing them that personal physical address information. So there'll be a mix. And, you know, our our game plan here with, as was represented by Bob in the utilities is, you know, we want to keep this as simple as possible. We'd like to do as much automated as possible and that's that's in the queue with with what's happening with the utilities. And indeed, all of these, as soon as the county is fully implemented, the addresses, the online systems that people use to verify addresses will now show up. So you can call a call center and say, you know, your address is, oh, I see it's one, two, three, San Carlos, whatever it might be. You can now have those conversations either online, which again, you can update your address with a lot of the DMV related interactions online. And it will now accept that information because you've got a address that's supported by AMS. So there'll be a mix of things, but you can you can leave a lot as is. Thank you.
Okay, very quickly, your comments. So over the last couple of years, since October of two thousand twenty-three, there have been over a hundred emails sent to City Hall on this subject. Because this is a significant local issue, the group, our group here, was determined to log in, look at each and every email that was sent in. And we associated the individual's name to each one, so we knew who had sent them. Whether for or against, all of the comments expressed were extremely helpful to this group for fact finding. With many of you attending the public meetings, those comments pretty much mirrored what we received in the email form. So examples of the feedback and on this roster, you can see for or against. So in one of them, emergency service errors, challenges and delays. Many people were concerned about trying to describe a difficult physical location in an emergency. It can be challenging. Online transaction challenges, prescription drug deliveries that might be refrigerated, time sensitive. That was particular concern. Financial, legal and insurance transaction problems. It is common a P O box is not accepted as proof of residency. That can make a simple task almost impossible. Utilities, as we know, most utilities have created their own unique address system. California building and fire codes, as has been mentioned before, a standard physical address is required by law. Those who wish to keep our non-standard address system express concern relative to, we don't want to lose our longstanding tradition and unique character. We need to keep our downtown post office open and continue to pick up our mail. We presently have great public safety response times, which is true. We can manage no standard address glitches if they occur. Some residents were comfortable exploring alternatives to the USPS addresses considered. And many requested more details regarding procedure as to how and if any changes might be implemented before decisions are made at the city council level. In closing, which I'm happy to, I'm sure you're all happy to hear that, I really, really, and the group really appreciates the detailed questions and just considerations that you you gave to us. So we appreciate your being here this evening and we look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Well, thanks, everybody. We went a little long, but we got started late. Sorry for that. So we want to put it out to you and your questions. And we're happy to come to you with a microphone if we have any questions, comments, et cetera. Can we get a?
Okay, so if a resident is asked to use a physical address, seven thirty, Mission or whatever it is, and yet they want to have their mail continued to be delivered to the P O box, how do you keep that straight?
So again, having lived this life when I lived in rural Colorado, that whenever somebody would ask for my address, and this is not necessarily what the post office will tell you, this is what we did. I would always say, I live at five oh two Russell Drive. That was on line one and on line two, it was P O box two, four, four, five. And that, as long as people put that on the envelope, it got to me typically. Now, what do you need to do in in almost every situation that today? You probably have your bills and other things that come to your P O box. You don't have to change anything because that's where they would continue to go. The difference is UPS, FedEx, the utilities, those three guys in the truck trying to deliver your mattress, they would all be able to come to your physical street address and they'd be able to find you because you're an, you're now are an AMS compatible address. Therefore, Google Maps, Apple Maps, the UPS, you know, system that they use, the Amazon system that they use, Uber, Lyft, all of those systems are populated from AMS. So they, all those systems would now work and be able to direct those people to you. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
How much is this going to cost us?
I don't know the financial cost to it. People have asked about the timeframe. So let me start there and then maybe talk about some of the effort involved. We'll be back to the city council in October. The city council will just hear our update and they're going to make at that point a decision. And I don't know what that decision would be, but if 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 it was a decision to proceed, that would probably mean that staff would go off and prepare a resolution that would come back in November for the first reading and a second reading in December. So any implementation activity would be, would be the first of the year. Based on our conversations with the county and the utilities, who are kind of the main players here as well as the post office, three months, four months, probably not more than six months to get it done. In terms of effort that would have to be required by the city, it it's a lot less than I thought going in. I mean, that was my biggest concern was that saying yes, go. I mean, that was my biggest concern, was that saying yes, go implement this without some idea of what the effort involved would be was difficult for me. And I think we'll probably have to try and quantify that in terms of hours, but I don't think it's a big number. I really don't.
It seems like it would be a good idea. Making major changes, especially in government, within communities, cost is a big factor. And it's nice to see all the research that's done, but in order for me to look at it and say, hey, this is a good idea, I need to see that bottom line. Because whether I pay property tax, whether I pay sales tax, or whether it comes through a government grant or not, it's all taxes that we're all paying. So I think that should be a high priority to identify the costs, so we see that along with the pros and cons.
Completely agree with you.
Okay, that brings up a good question. From a cost point of view, are there, if we decide to do this, implement it, are there federal grants available? I mean, is that a next stage to look at in funding of that possibility, or would it all have to be locally funded?
I know of no scenario where the federal government would want to help us achieve this. You know, it's 3,000 buildings. I think the biggest players involved are prepared to kind of do it in batch mode. I think actually, I mean, to your point, if the utilities do it, that's no cost, other than some coordination cost, and that's really just giving them a spreadsheet. It's a spreadsheet that has all the APN numbers and the addresses. So this most significant effort involved really is filling up, is finishing that spreadsheet. Kevin's probably got it half-done already. If that was the way to go, if we go a different way, it's a different spreadsheet. But that's a big piece of the effort. Beyond that, it's going to be on the providers or on the individual, right? My insurance company isn't going to do a batch update. If I want them to know that I'm now 123 Comino Real, I got to call my State Farm guy, and there's going to be some cost there that's just biased individually. I don't know that there's any.
But my second question was, from a timing point of view, from the utilities, did they say, oh yeah, I mean, because I've dealt with banks, utilities, you name it, to make changes to their software to now, these are the new addresses, did they say, I know they said, oh, not a big deal, but timing-wise, did they say, you know, we got to include it in a budget, it'll take us six months to do the programming? I mean, I know, I've dealt with programming, it's like, A, it's got to be budgeted for, and it'll be next year.
Yeah.
Did they say, or?
What they said is that they want to do it, they want it to happen, and they'd like it to happen fast.
But they didn't give any time, like, it takes us X amount of time?
No, because it kind of depends what we give them.
Okay.
I would add a PS to that, is that they know their quality of service suffers today because they don't have that information repeatedly and shareably in a way that is intuitive for all of their service personnel. So it costs them money to have it in the way it is now. So you could do some balancing of where your costs are from their perspective, and that helps them be more efficient. So they're all over it, and they want to see it happen. And again, when, you know, once we get the county to have all the information up and online, it will be public. And so it could cause them confusion, could. I mean, the whole objective of working with them in advance is to minimize any of that, the gaps that might occur here. So we're looking to align the dots for this project as best, as possible.
One of the things that no one's talked about is how ugly it is going to be to have street numbers on our houses, on our beautiful historic Carmel homes. So in Dallas, when I lived in Dallas, and we've been living here, we've owned our house since 93, we've been living here full-time 25 years, but we had curbs, and they would put the street number on the curb. We don't have curbs in Carmel. This is going to be some ugly number on my historic house in Carmel, and no one said anything about that.
That's fair. Emily did read this, the requirements for satisfying that, and basically, it has to be four inches tall. Each number has to be four inches tall, four inches tall, and two and a half inches wide. So it's about like that, each number. So if it's 506, it's three of those in a row, and it needs to be posted in a place that's visible from the street. We haven't talked about enforcement, because we don't know really what is there. Some of that, again, is a city council decision about what level of enforcement, what timeframe they would want if there is enforcement of it. And again, we're just trying to share the questions we asked and the answers we got so that our city council can make an informed decision.
I would like to offer one more PS to that, which is, I mean, so this slide just has some examples of some pre-existing numbers that could be displayed, and this is, you know, shows it just a variety of off-the-shelf stuff that you can buy on the internet. And you can see that there's a lot of personality and differences that could happen in the visual display, so no one's saying that it's got to be an Arial font. You know, that's not prescribed, because we need to, to your point, Carol, that we want to maintain as much character as possible. We do also want to encourage people to use and enhance their use of house names. That is a characteristic of our village. And, you know, maybe you put your number up and your house name on whatever is your chosen sign approach. So it doesn't, you know, it doesn't entirely answer your concerns, but it's just some of the possibilities that could be.
That when and if the city decides to go forward with this, there should be a decision that's made for where it's going to be placed, that takes into consideration the fact that we have these historic homes, and not necessarily to have to blast it on the gate or something like that. That I, I mean, I guess I would put mine near my electric meter that's on my garage.
Yeah.
I think this is a good concern, and I actually looked into this a little bit. I don't live in a historic house, but I grew up in a historic house. And luckily today, I mean, you go on eBay and you can buy historic numbers, and you can buy a period correct number for your house, you know. So it might take a little searching, but we have some in the back.
Yeah, let's go to the back, and then your next.
I just wanted to thank you for a very informative session. You've obviously spent a lot of time researching, and I heard a lot of new data points, and I hope the city council can move forward with the decision based on your great work. So thank you.
Thanks. Yes, ma'am.
I totally disagree with the lady who just spoke before me. It's not a matter of beautiful how ugly or how beautiful it is, it's a matter of life and death. I personally experienced with my husband last 12 years. I had encounter with a 20 emergency, five times calling ambulance.
I've never had a problem. I've called to my husband.
You don't have a problem. I had a problem.
So folks, let's, if we can, but let's, let's each.
For 55 years, I personally experienced the last 12 years. Latest one was two months ago, and it took actually five and a half minutes until ambulance come because they make you repeat, or say it again, or it's a no south, was your next building closed? Or the, if I said forest front of, across from forest there, then forest there have two gates, main gate or back gate. So while you're repeating, it took five and a half minutes average, and I called five times ambulance last few years because of my husband. Then means life and death. Every second counts.
I'm sorry you had that experience. That has not been my experience when I have personally called nine one one, probably more times when a tree fell on my house, when the house caught fire, I've not had a problem. My husband falling at least four times.
Experiences, and I'm encouraging us to share, yeah, share your experience, respect somebody else's.
That's important. They know exactly where they're getting into.
It's not been my experience.
I have a two-part question. One, I still am not clear on what the requirements would be for where to place the numbers on your residence, and if you have to have a street light over it. And my second part to the question is, we have no guarantees that the postal service won't close down our post office and have us go down to the crossroads.
Let's take the second one first. That's true. That's just true. Because, I mean, if the post office is governmental and it's a budgetary decision, and, I mean, the point we tried to make is that implementing standardized AMS-compatible addresses isn't driving that decision, it's just a cost decision. And if they go there, you're right, all of us would have to go there, because they're not going to deliver our mail. But they've given us no indication. What I'm told is that via Nona Marie, is that, that post office is full for now, anyway. And, you know, we've got a lot of PO boxes, and they got to go somewhere, so.
And they'll continue to pay for them, the people that have a second box or?
Oh, like a free box? Will we continue to get a free one? I think the rules don't change as a result of standardized address.
So you can get a free PO box here in town if you're a property owner or have a rental or lease agreement. So that is a part of today's approach. It's the small ones. If you need a bigger one or a supplemental one, then that's usually per what I've learned is on your own nickel. But those free ones are a part of being a resident of the city and/or, you know, a business person who's using a.
I can't tell you how many people I know that don't live in Carmel that have PO boxes here.
And they can, but they will, will pay for it.
Yeah, they pay for it.
Yeah, they pay for it. You bet.
Nothing, that doesn't, none of that changes.
And you didn't come up with where the sign numbers have?
So we really should have a sign on that, a slide on that, but it's what I said before. At a minimum, the numbers have to be four inches tall by two and a half, and they have to, they have to be posted in a place that's visible from the street. And actually, I think ideally not in the public right away, but on private property.
Does not have to have a light. It's always, it's a good thing to make sure that you're really findable, but it is not required. It is not required.
I had a quick follow-up on that. Does it have to be on the house? It can't be on the fence, for example?
It could be on the fence.
It could be on the fence.
Yeah, it's visible from the street. It's kind of.
Did I hear you right that some could go on the fence?
Yes.
Yeah, it could go on the fence.
It's visible.
It doesn't have to be. It's just visible from the street, is what the rules say.
I've lived here for 63 years, and I've made it to the post office and back and what have you. I really, you know, it doesn't really matter to me at this point what they do. However, I finally got Amazon to accept my address as it is, and I found out from the post office, because one of the deliveries came through USPS instead of Amazon, is if after you're, after you have, you know, your address, so it would be the same if you had a number and street or avenue, is to put pound sign in your PO box. So that should eliminate that problem. That was my concern was, is this going to, if we have the 146, will they not allow us to use the PO box on there? So if it goes UPS or FedEx or whatever, if that, if they'll still let that happen. But I was looking at one of the things, and it said you can't use anything but numbers, alpha or numeric, and I don't know if pound sign. So if they'll, if they'll deal with that, that will be very helpful.
You're effectively making your house look like it's a unit number of a larger structure, and the pound sign is allowed for unit numbers. You know, I had one when I lived in Washington DC, it was pound sign 900, because I lived on the ninth floor.
They're not seeing the zip plus five, is it plus four? They don't allow us to use the PO box as that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And do we have any more questions? One right here.
So I am kind of late to this issue. What is the origin of this issue?
I would say that it's people having a bad experience with fire and safety, which people do have. Not everybody does, but there is a lot of that, and the inconvenience of doing transactions online, you just are inhibited when you need to identify where your house is in most instances. I mean, we've got Amazon and UPS deliveries find our home, and it is a corner home. So it makes it a lot easier that if you're in the middle of a block, it's much harder for any of the delivery folks to make that happen. So, yeah. And I did want to mention that it's going to take us a while. It would be great if we can be fully implemented, if it's decided in the early spring or late winter, if you declared the quarter of January, February, March. But again, it's, we're still waiting for the right decisions to happen. But in the meantime, there is, I, on the Siri website, it's available to anybody, there is a no address guide that gives a lot of tips and tricks on how to work with our current situation. So I highly recommend people to just use that. Go see if there's anything in there. There's informed delivery, there's a bunch of other things that you can do that takes the edge off of today's state. It doesn't fix everything, because until we get into the AMS database, it won't fix all use cases.
How did the origin of this begin? What started all this?
Oh, I mean, I guess the origin was in 1912, a decision was made not to have addresses. I guess this is the origin.
It's changed that. Who has?
Oh, I think it's what Nancy said. I think it's, it's just hearing from more and more and more stories. I mean, the three of us around the city council, we, and we're all taxpayers and residents, and we hear more and more and more stories from people that are.
People have just come forward and brought this to you, or was there a group of people? Or?
I think it's all of the above.
There was, yes.
It just seems to be coming to a head all of a sudden, and I was just wondering how long this has maybe been going on.
It's been forever. I don't want to stand over here, so I'm going to take a step back. So this actually, the, I think the nexus of it was, it's become a city council priority since 2021. So this became a priority when city council was still meeting via Zoom. Folks were emailing, calling, reaching out to the city council at that time, and then at that time, it was placed on the list of strategic priorities. And that's, that's really how, you know, it came back in recent history. I don't, I hope that answers your question.
And actually, by the way, we had multiple city council meetings and interactions. The prior council had members of the council that were looking at the solution for this. Where in some way, there were a lot of reports of injuries and situations, as well as the fact that we are currently violating the law, because the law requires a fire code and the safety code requires us to have addresses. That's, that's standard across, across California. So that has been going on for several, at least for us, multiple years so far. You know what I mean?
We've been living like this forever.
Yes, yes. But, but, yeah. Okay, so I guess my comment or my question would be more with what the lady in the front has said. I feel that we're a part of a community. I feel that there are a lot of people that have needs, that have had issues of the fire or the 911 caller or the police department, like I had, coming and not finding me and not finding my neighbor and having the risk of what that means. So I am more of a believer that if my community members are some that would like to have an address and that will bring them a better life and peace of mind, I am all for that. That I will have the choice of putting my sign however I want to put it in my house, I'll put it next to my sign where I have a name, and that's fine with me too. So I'm all about, we can make this, the signs, personalized. But I, my view will be, I would like to give addresses to those of us But my view will be, I would like to give addresses to those of us who are really in desperate needs, because there were a lot of lot, back to the point of the prior meetings, a lot of people coming forward with issues. And therefore, for me, is more a belief of supporting my, all my community members that needed more or that required, and I would like to have an address, too, as well.
Someone could have had issues.
If I could speak to that just for a second as well, I had the job of compiling all the comments. That was the tip of the iceberg that we showed you. I mean, it really was. The emails that we got, some were a full page long and more of issues. I mean, some had 13 issues that they were dealing with. So I'm glad for some people it's not a problem. For others, it really, really is. And when I was on council in the year 2000, this was a huge issue, and we couldn't do anything then. I shouldn't say it, but I hope we can do something now.
Yes, ma'am.
We bought our home 25 years ago, and at that time, they had an address put on our home, and, but we could never use it. And I don't know where that address came from.
And she's not within the city limits. She's not.
Yeah, so.
But she is within the city limits.
Yeah, no, I.
Where do you live?
Yeah, no.
Where do you live, ma'am?
Pardon? Carpenter and Fifth.
Carpenter and Fifth.
So there was a time where the city thought they were going to implement addresses, and a lot of people got really zealous and just posted it, and/or thought that if they just posted a number, they magically could get all of their issues solved. So some people got ahead of the actual formal implementation, and so that could have been the case with the home that you purchased. I would suspect that that might be the case.
Is there four people who do not object to putting a number on their house? Can they just not put a number on their house? Or would it be a physical requirement?
So all I can tell you, it's, I guess, again, it's back to enforcement. Enforcement's probably, if it's up to anybody, it's probably the fire department.
Okay.
And when we asked the fire chief and the police chief about enforcement, the answer was that they cannot imagine writing citations for somebody that doesn't have a number.
Right.
I'm not speaking for the next fire chief.
Right. I'm just saying, if someone absolutely objects, don't put your number, but I pray they can find you when they need you.
I doubt something terrible, oh, I wouldn't.
And there is advantages to having everything numbered, because they know, you know, which house to truly get to when they look at one side of the street, and the house is on either side. So there's definite advantages, but, yeah.
Do I stay with my husband or stand in the middle of the street so I can get an ambulance done, and I just put him in the car?
What else we got? Other questions?
Are we good?
Right. I was willing to leave.
Well, thank you, everybody. We appreciate you coming. Sorry?
Sorry.
Do we have anything on Zoom? There are no hands on Zoom.
Actually, there is a folder of this, printed out of the slides over here on the right. I think it's face down, so if anybody wanted to take a printout of the slides with them, please do. And it'll be also available in all the normal places online as well.
And we welcome your feedback. There's an email address here, or just reach out to me.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it big time.